Good evening. As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ronald Brooks.
Aye.
Ron Corain.
Present.
Duarkesh Nalan.
Present.
Tiara doesn't seem to be here. Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Planner Adam Menard.
Here.
Rachel's not here tonight. Good evening. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, December 27, 2022, now called order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, and extended on June 16, 2021. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening in person and by remote access. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133747477. Or the public can join via computer at gotomeeting.com/join/133747477. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Vision. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? Being none. Accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees, and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please rise and join us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All supporting materials that have been provided to members of the body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective, clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and into the microphone in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions regarding all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Turning to item one, at 7:00 PM, applicant Sparhawk Realty requesting a site plan approval under Section 3.2.2.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a two-building, six-unit multifamily development and related site improvements at 404 Oxford Street, North Auburn, Mass. 01501, MAP 40, parcel 82. May have a motion to open the hearing.
I'll make that vote soon.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor. Duarkesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, an aye, it is a vote. Is there anyone here representing Sparhawk Realty?
Yep. Is the Board okay here?
Yep.
Okay. For the purpose of Sparhawk Realty for a project that was permitted back in 2016 and '17 for a multifamily, six-unit apartment project. Due to some unfortunate circumstances, the permits were allowed to lapse, so they're re-filing for re-permitting of the project. I don't know if the Board can see, but this is a Horgan Skating Arena, so we're directly west of the arena. Frontage on North Oxford Street. Old North Oxford Street breaks off here. And Bryn Mawr Ave has, it has frontage on Bryn Mawr Ave as well. Excuse me. The property is 2.1 acres roughly. There's a wetland area that cuts, bisects the property. We do have a filing in front of the Conservation Commission, NZBA. We've had our initial meeting and a site walk with Conservation Commission. We have a follow-up meeting with them tomorrow night. This is our first meeting with the Planning Board. So as mentioned, the property contained a two-story, single-family home and a detached garage. It was unoccupied and kind of rundown. The applicant received a demo permit for that, in that house and garage. We're taking it down in 2017. So we've updated our as-built survey to show, you know, the contours. The sites fully stabilized where they removed the house and garage. The Conservation Commission during those site walks, like you can't even tell there was actually ever a house here. They did a, did a good job of, on the demo. This is the layout that was approved. Well, 90% of it is a layout that was approved in 2016 by the ZBA and Conservation Commission. Then January 24th of 2017, it received the site plan approval from the Planning Board. So it's still four two-bedroom units, two single, one-bedroom units. Each has an underground garage and a assigned parking space in the front. So it has two parking spaces per each. We had a department head meeting a month ago, and we received some feedback from the town. Mainly fire asked that we add a no-parking, you know, stripe lane here on the side. We've done that. And we most recently received, this was originally peer-reviewed by Quinn Engineering during the process in 2016, '17. It was just re-reviewed by Graves Engineering. We received those comments on the 23rd. And one of the changes they requested was, it was approved with 18 and a half foot parking space out front, which met zoning and was approved. But they suggested we should go to 21 feet. We did have enough room, so I think you have the response letter. We were able to extend, add two and a half feet of pavement on this edge and extend the driveways to 21 feet, as requested. Other than that, the drainage, Graves is good with the drainage system design, which is subsurface infiltration for the roofs and driveway, along with a surface infiltration basin. So that was the only major change. It wasn't overly major, it's two and a half foot strip of pavement. But we were also requested to add some additional snow storage areas, which we have done on the south side. And Graves also requested, if there was room, to put in a turnout. So we've added that at the southeast corner of the property before you go on to North Oxford Street. So there is a turnout added to the, to the plan. Adding that small amount of impervious did require us to update the stormwater management plan. We've done that, and that's been submitted to the town and Graves as well. This plan shows the subsurface drainage under the parking for the, that is the large infiltration system, and the small infiltration basin with a French drain along the side, and then the new turnout. So the property, as I said, is about 2.1 acres. About 0.65 acres would be the developed area. Generally within the areas that were cleared during the house, the former homeowner's area. So those are the comments we've received. We've addressed those. Again, this was generally the site plan for multifamily apartment under the zoning bylaw. And like I said, unfortunately, the permits expired, and so they're reapplying to re-permit the project. We do know there's the one change, aside from what we just responded to Graves, they would be under a major earthquake permit now. So that would have to be applied through to the DPW prior to any construction.
Does anyone from the audience have any comments or questions? No, you have to go up, excuse me, you have to go up to the microphone, identify yourself and your address, please.
Oh, cool. Hey, I'm Liu. I live across the street. I've been here for several years. How many families lives in these houses?
Uh, there's no one living in it now.
Oh, no, I mean, like, when you build the structure, how many families it meant for?
These are two bedroom units, and these are single bedroom units, so.
Six, six units, six families. You can go behind the podium, you don't have to stand in front.
My name is Thomas, I live next door. So one of my biggest concerns is...
Need your name?
My name is Thomas, I live next door.
I need your last name, too.
402.
402.
I live at 402.
You have to give your, excuse me.
What direction are you draining towards?
Excuse me. You have to give your first and your last name.
My first name is Thomas, my last name is Enriquez. Spelled Hotel Echo November Romeo India Quebec Uniform Echo Zulu. I live at 402 Oxford Street, North. My biggest concern is, what direction is this draining towards? Because, you know, I don't know if you're aware of it or really concerned about it, but that whole area back there is full of groundwater. And you're shoving two giant structures that this property is not zoned for. It's zoned for a single-family dwelling. And you're shoving six families into a big concrete cinder block that you're shoving right into the ground. So I'm really concerned where the water's going. Because if the surrounding properties start getting water in their basement, are you gonna pay for it, are you gonna do anything about it? Because that whole area back there is saturated in groundwater. And you might be blocking a lot of groundwater. That property is zoned for a single-family dwelling, from what I understand. I'm kind of wondering how somebody obtained a special permit to be able to do this. Was it a backdoor deal, that somebody's hand got greased to do it? Because, you know, and I know this isn't your company, this was the previous guy, or, I don't, I don't really know. But this is, this is concerning. Especially about the property surrounding and where the groundwater is gonna go towards. Because that property, all back there, is saturated.
As far as the zoning goes, you have to go to the zoning board. As far as the recharge unit, we have not yet had the opportunity to read Graves' review. There may be something in there, we just got it tonight. So this isn't gonna be voted on tonight, it'll be continued to the next meeting. So we haven't even had time to do our due diligence yet to finish looking at the plans.
Oh, I don't have any animosity towards anybody or any individual.
I didn't say you did.
You know, just, I have concerns and I would like, you know.
Oh, absolutely, I understand.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Yes, the green lines on both sides here are wetlands. We know the area in the back is saturated. But this drops off, let's see, from the road. We're at about 580 and at the wetland back here. You know, it's dropping off five feet in that drainage. The drainage is going away from your house. And it's, we have test pit data that was witnessed by the town and the engineers. We know groundwater in here is, we're well above it. We're meeting the DEP regulations. That was peer-reviewed by Quinn and now recently Graves. So we know we're well above the groundwater in the development area. This does drain through an intermittent channel that's several hundred feet into the site. And this is an isolated wetland here, I mean, in between the abutter and us. But yes, this is saturated, that's flagged as a wetland area, we know that. But again, we're, you know, this is five feet in elevation above, so. And we do have four test pit data within the site itself, so.
Anyone else? Anyone else from the audience have any questions? Please identify and give your address, please.
Hi, my name's Dave Roy. I live at 410 Oxford Street, the house on the other side. My concerns, too, that's saturated back there, but, I mean, in the spring, this is two or three feet deep here. Frogs, ducks, wood ducks, the whole thing. So now they're saying they're gonna drain the water this way, which is onto my property. My property comes way over, you know, right to here. So that, that, and a second thing, I read, I read it over now. This, this is just apartments, right? The original thing was handicap, which I read in the thing. It says it requires five acres, so it's no longer handicapped apartments, right? It's just, it wasn't a beginning, the first.
No, the original was, they said do one unit for a senior car.
Oh, okay, all right. Now, and then I just, I read on the thing, and it said, a minimum of three units per building. So you're going two and four?
Yes, that was approved by the ZBA.
Okay, so they cut it down from three to, so let that one?
They did two, instead of two threes, they did a two and a four.
Okay, all right. So that's who, that's been run through the mill?
Yeah, this was permitted for the bill before, and all they're doing is reapplying now.
All right. And then, and the drainage, what did you say, they changed with the drainage?
No, the drainage stayed the same. So we have all the roofs and the driveway go to an underground infiltration system.
Okay.
And then if that overflows, you have an interceptor trench that goes to this infiltration basin, so.
Okay.
The natural drainage for the site was to this low area near your house. Yes, we know that holds water.
Mm-hmm.
And that, we have to design so we're not increasing runoff from the site. That's why you have these large infiltration systems.
All right.
And that's peer-reviewed by the town and the peer-review agent at the time, Quinn Engineering, and just recently reviewed by Graves Engineering.
Okay. And then, yeah, and like you said, this, if this gets messed up here, back here, these people over here, I understand flood out pretty good.
Yeah, we're not in a map flood zone. And again, we know this is a wetland, and it has an intermittent stream that flows from a pond up there and goes through. So there's a whole drainage channel in that back there. And we're just one part of it. That's why we can't increase runoff off the site.
All right, so it's all going back into the ground?
Yes, the infiltration.
Okay. And they're gonna have town water, town sewer?
Town water and sewer.
Okay. How are they, any heating, underground propane, where they?
No, I believe it's electric.
All heat pumps?
I'm not sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else from the audience? Ron, I believe you had a question?
Did you, you, you said, I think, underground garage? Or did you mean under the apartment, under the apartments themselves, but not? You, you wouldn't be able to go underground?
No, I'm sorry, I may have this right, that's just the garage under.
And how far down did you say the groundwater was?
The highest estimated groundwater, so that would be modeling a redox, was at 55 inches. Observed groundwater was between 88 and 100 inches below ground.
How does that relate to elevation?
The infiltration system just has to be required to have at least a two-foot separation of groundwater. So we're at. The test pit here is about nine feet below existing grade, the groundwater.
What's the elevation, 576?
Uh, 579.
579.
And then the one closest to the wetland side here, two, which is at about 575. That had estimated groundwater at, they had weepage at 98 inches.
So what is the elevation of the wetland out in the back? Do you have that?
Yes, this, this wetland is...
Like halfway between where your hand is and Bryn Mawr Ave?
The wetland here, this is the edge that's delineated. But then it goes back. That's the elevation, 574.
Wondering why it's 574 and, yeah, in the test pit. Down nine feet before you hit water?
Eight and change. Eight and change. I just couldn't look clearly.
That's been a swamp as long as I've been here.
Yep.
Do we know what the high water elevation is in those wetland areas in the spring? Actual elevation?
Uh, would approximately be 571 in here, and it's hard to tell in here, but 573 probably. Cause the wetland is up on a, there's a bit of a bank in here, and this as well. This looks like maybe they historically excavated out gravel, cause it's all beautiful seaman gravel in these test pits. And that's why you have that deep bowl there. As the abutter mentioned, it does get a couple feet of water in in the spring.
Do you have a location where that empties that wetland?
This one?
Yeah, the whole back.
Yeah, the back of the area as well. So there's a, there's a ponded area to the south. This is Dartworth Res way over here. Along Bryn Mawr, there's a drainage area in here, a pond, an intermittent stream cuts through this area. It runs all the way down here, then I think that might be where Albert across the street. There is an intermittent channel in this area, and Graves has that.
Kind of where the swamp ends on the north end of Bryn Mawr, where it ends, there's no brooks running through anybody's place there. It might, it might be, it must be paved under brown.
Yeah, it's thick. I had, when I flagged this, I didn't walk in, it kind of turned over. Just kind of see the channel here where it comes in. I can't make out the rest of the channel just because of the darkness of the photo there, but you can see the supporting, the pond here. But. So the infiltration chamber is a shallow unit underneath the pavement, 30 inches deep. So by DEP, they're required to have at least a two-foot separation.
So groundwater is three feet down lower than this.
Yes. Of two people, a lot of individuals, this is a minimal bit of water.
Duarkesh, do you have any questions?
A couple of questions. One is on the, so maybe just for us, the ZBA review, has that been completed?
Aye.
That was in my October.
No, not yet.
October 20.
Okay. And then, just looking at this, the plan again, are there parking spots outside of the, you know, outside of the garage there?
Yes, there's, yep, let me go back to... So each unit has a garage under, and then a parking spot in front of each unit. And those were just increased from the 18 and a half that was done in 2016 to 21 feet.
Each unit only has one space outside the garage?
Each one has one outside and one inside, yes, correct.
That's on the driveway, right, essentially?
And then it has a 24-foot wide drive. And then we just added the turnout that Graves requested.
One other question was on the sprinkler. So does, do, do each unit, does each unit come with sprinkler system?
The four, the four unit is sprinkled, the two unit is not. And the fire department requested that, we just put a note on the plan that the four unit, by code, has to be sprinkled, the two unit does not.
Ron, anything else?
No, I, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I apologize, we don't have the same plan that you have here. I think we have an older version, cause we're not seeing some of the stuff that you're pointing out. Can you point out where the fire lane is that you said the fire department requested?
Right, yep. They asked that we dedicate this side with the stripes, and then we've added the R71 no parking signs along there.
Um, I did not notice it on the plan, it just says site distance typical. Did you actually do a site distance analysis in terms of coming out of the driveway?
Yeah, site distance was done back into the 2016 and '17. Which sheet are you looking at? And I just dropped off Adam the new revised plans today, so.
On our plan, I'm looking at C4.
Oh, C4?
Yep. It just says site, site distance typical.
Oh, yeah, that was the planting and landscape plan? They just had the, the site distance is shown on there. That was requested back in 16.
So do you know the distance?
Uh, let's see, I don't.
You have coming at that point?
I know it passed muster, so I, I don't know the distance.
Is that in an older report, perhaps, that we can put our hands on? Okay, thank you. Also, where you're putting in your driveway, there's currently a sidewalk. What's your plan to restore the sidewalk? You also have a crosswalk and?
Yeah, there's a crosswalk, the sidewalk ends here, and there's a crosswalk here.
So the sidewalk, if you actually go up to the site, I believe, crosses over and heads towards the police department on that side?
Yeah, and then the sidewalk picks back up on this side, yeah. It's kind of a strange setup.
Are you restoring the sidewalk through the site, or are you?
Um, we're not, we're not destroying the sidewalk. It ends here at the crosswalk. So it's right here, comes down and stops. So we're just tying into the existing edge of pavement. And then this is the edge of pavement that goes into North Oxford, old North Oxford Street. And then the sidewalk ends here in the island.
Okay, so perhaps I'm looking at an older version of street view, but that sidewalk continues towards the police department, according to the Google Street View. It ends at the intersection, and then it picks up across.
Right, yeah, this sidewalk does go all the way down to the police.
Right, but if you actually come to the crosswalk, Harold?
I guess I'm a little confused, I'm sorry. So, yeah, we have sidewalk here.
Right, so existing crosswalk right here?
Yeah.
Which is right there?
Yeah.
If you look and you span over, heading towards the police department, that sidewalk continues this way. Just continues at the intersection, then picks up again. So this is your pedestrian path to travel. So are you maintaining that?
Uh, I don't know, that's a question I will find out. Cause I believe that is the end of the sidewalk, right there. It just dead-ends.
Right, so are you, are you disrupting this, or are you removing this, or are you continuing?
No, we're just tying into where the edge of the pavement is.
You're tying into where the edge of the pavement?
Yes. No, we're not disturbing that, no.
Not disturbing?
No, this is all staying. That pavement is staying.
Okay, are you disturbing the?
Nope.
You're not disturbing that?
No, we're tying, our tie-in is right here.
Okay.
Yep.
So you're not disturbing in what's there?
No.
Okay.
Anyone else?
No.
That's it?
No.
I have a few questions. One is that you're gonna be feeding six units off of one two-inch water line?
No, if I go to the utility plan?
Show them the plan.
Um, let's see. Um, let's see. Utility plan. No, there, there's a six inch water going to the four unit and then there's another two inch line coming in here.
Does that change from your first rendition?
Uh, and then there's a separate water.
I'm looking at it right now, it shows two inches going to the first unit toward Oxford Street.
Right, there's, there's a two unit going to the, uh, two inch to the four unit, a two inch to here and a six inch for the fire sprinkler on the four unit.
See that on the plan? Because on, on the, uh, utility plan and C3 dot 01, you show a tap and sleeve and valve with an eight by two reducer and then a two by two tee. So I don't know where your six inch line's going in. I don't see it.
Um, right here on this corner of the building, there should be a six inch, shows a six inch line.
That must have been added because it's not on this plan.
Uh, maybe he had it shut off, I'm, I'm sorry, but the new plans that were submitted, that's the same plan you're looking at here. Yeah, there's a six inch for the sprinkler and then a separate two inch line and then a separate two inch line to the other two unit.
So on running the separate two inch line, does that run into like the first unit and then run through all the units off of that? Or do you bring the two inch line down and put each unit on its own service?
Uh, that's a good question. I, I'm not sure. It looks like it's being fed just with the, the two inch line that was.
I don't, I don't think you can feed one apartment to the other on the same line. I don't think that's code. Same with the sewer.
Uh, no, the sewer, they all have their own lateral out with a clean out in front in the driveway.
That leads to my next question. Which way does the sewer flow in Oxford Street, north or south?
I would say south because that's the, the slope is going down that way.
If it flows south, you got a problem. Because where you're tying in, that Y is backwards.
Uh, maybe a drafting, I mean, we, we followed what the, the town asked us for in 2016, 17 and.
Well, that should be, that, where that Y is right there, that flow should be going toward the word that says north on North Oxford Street. If it goes the other way, you're going to be entering six units into a main backwards. You can't do that. I'm surprised, has this been by the sewer department yet? Cause I'm surprised they're not making you put a, a manhole in the street and running an eight inch line in instead of a six inch line for six units.
Yeah, they had us add a manhole right off the edge of the right away, right there.
Well, I see that, but I'm surprised they didn't make you add a, a manhole in the road. Cause that line should be eight inch, not six inch for six units. Look at it this way, if you had a dead end street with three houses on each side, you would not run a six inch line up with six inch Ys. It'd be an eight inch line with six inch Ys.
I'll get that answered for you.
So as it is right now, you, you plan on coming off a Y off of the main and putting a manhole inside the property, six inch.
Yeah, there's a separate manhole just off the right away and then a separate.
What I'm saying is it's from that manhole to the main in Oxford Street is a six inch line, it's not an eight inch line. It's a six inch service that was put in back in 1978. You know, it should be transite pipe in there. Uh, my next question is, on your paving schedule, on page C5 point 00, your table is kind of messed up. Because it says concrete walk, it looks like half inch and half inch. And then concrete road, passenger car parking area, half inch, half inch. And then the concrete road, truck and heavy traffic is two and a half inch and a half and inch. No one puts down a half an inch of paving. Uh, first coat, not second coat.
Which, uh, which detail are you looking at?
I'm looking at, you're on page C5 dash 00, your table right there on the right hand side of the page, shows you all your depths, right there where your hand is. You're showing half inch and half inch.
No, that's one and a half, it's just the.
That's not what it says. It's, it's out of the.
Yeah.
Out of the Excel part of the thing.
Yeah, that's.
Drop down, but it doesn't show inch and a half, it shows half inch, half inch, half inch, half inch, two and a half and a half inch.
Yeah, that's.
Heavy wood should be two and a half, an inch and a half.
Yeah, it's just.
Be two and inch and a half.
I think that's just a typo, but I'll, we'll get that fixed.
So the only portion that should be, um, two inch, an inch and a half should be the actual driveway from your separation and the rest of it should be the, uh, two and a half, an inch and a half. Cause you'll have heavy trucks going in there for repairs or whatever.
Right, yeah.
Out of constant traffic flow, but still the driveway won't take it, plowing, not going to be little trucks.
Yeah, he's got heavy traffic, 12 inch, two and a half, yeah, and that's supposed to be one and a half, that's a mess up.
Yeah, it just says one and a half, you can't see the ones.
We'll get the detail fixed.
Um, rest of the details look pretty good. On your catch basins, are you going to put hoods in them or not? I didn't see that on the detail.
Hmm, catch basin, contact. Yes, it's Orifice Platon Hood.
You're going to put storm scepter, storm scepter?
That's the contact, yeah, storm scepter, yeah.
Okay, and what do you have, two catch basins or three catch basins outside? It's hard, we only have the mini plan, so it's hard for me to.
I, I know, yeah, the full size plans are over there. So let's see, he's got a storm scepter unit here. Then he's got a, another DMH there, which is a deep sump with a storm scepter.
There's two catch basins on the whole site?
Down in that corner. Then there's another, there's a catch, there's another catch basin there.
Yeah, there's one up by the left hand corner between the, right near the corner of both buildings and your other one's down there at the outlet of the, um, your infiltration unit.
Infiltration, yeah. Yeah, everything is pitched to drain down to these, uh, the two units down here with the, uh, the storm scepter units.
It's a rim elevation. On the, um, catch basins on the utility plan, I don't see a rim elevation, maybe just I can't see it. I see invert elevation.
It's on, it's on sheet C3, the grading and drainage plan. That has all the rims and inverts, I believe.
When the first, you have a drain, the roof drains come out of the units, the two apartment unit and that goes into one manhole, correct? Be the top left side, right where the two corners meet at the two buildings. Yeah, right in there, there's a catch basin, I believe that's a catch basin. And that's where you show the, it looks like the, I can't tell, it's a roof drain or, I'm assuming a roof drain.
Foundation drain. I think it's supposed to be, or is it already, yeah, FD comes out and ties in. Then you've got a line coming out here into the, uh, DMH1 before it goes into the infiltration system.
I just can't see the rim elevation. Catch basin, 579 point 6. There isn't a ton of pitch between, um, the first unit, or the two unit toward the bottom of the page and where it goes into the, um, little detention basin, which is only two feet deep. Well, the driveway actually pitches from the roadway to the house by a tenth according to your finished floor elevation and your elevation near the road.
Yeah, the catch basin, that's the low spot there, it's at 579 point 8. So this pitches down slow to here. This, the driveway from that unit pitches down to these two. And that's the, the top of that catch basin is at 579 point 8, so it's four tenths below.
Do these units, are these built on slabs? Not, no, no sellers?
No, I don't believe there are any sellers, I believe there's slabs.
That's all I had for now. Anyone else? That's it? Red one?
Are these units, will they be individually owned or one owner who rents to the other people?
Uh, I'm not sure of that. I believe the, the goal would be, it'd be individual owners, but I can get that answered for you.
Any other court, nope, gentleman over here on the, yeah, you got to go back up, re-identify yourself, give your address again.
So something I'd like to address, um, when the groundwater was measured for this property, it was done during the middle of summer. I would like to really see where the groundwater is during the seasons where the town of Auburn does not care when we're watering our lawns. Because during the middle of summer, it really doesn't matter where the groundwater is. It's not going to be impactful on us neighbors. However, during the seasons where the groundwater is going to change, it will be severely impactful.
When they bring out the PE to dig the test pits to check for groundwater, they can tell the high spot of the groundwater by the ground. Believe it or not, they can. They don't have to do it in the spring. Right, it used to be back in the day, you couldn't dig a test pit for a perk, test or anything after March and April. Now they can do it year round because they can, their technology is so good, they can model it and tell you exactly where the high, high water level mark was that spring. And where it's constantly like that in the spring. They can tell.
Four ten Oxford Street, so nine feet between, uh, the groundwater and the, and the elevation of the build we're looking for or? Cause I don't think there's nine feet.
This, this corner here and that wetland there, I don't think there's, there's nine feet.
Is that what they were saying?
No.
No.
The corner of this house is at 577.
Yeah.
When it's down here, 573.
Four foot difference.
About four feet from this corner down.
Okay, and that's enough? So the ground, the groundwater is, isn't the same as the wet, the what level of the wetland?
No, not always, no. No, the groundwater, especially in a, uh, gravelly soil like this, it's usually fairly flat and consistent, but, um, everything kind of drains the way. There's a divide farther up the street, some of the drainage goes that way and the rest comes back down. Source of the station is at the outset.
Yeah, cause I don't think, all right, so the groundwater, uh, isn't the same as the level of the, the water where it is in the wetlands?
No. A lot of times it's close and when we, you know, augur through, but again.
I, I, I think the confusion might be.
This is eight feet above that one.
Right, but I think. There, right, but this isn't.
No.
I mean, is it?
Right, but we're, we're infiltrating here. We had it signed, like I said, DEP has certain requirements for where we can put our infiltration.
I, I.
It has to be a certain distance above the ground.
Right.
The corner of the house and the slab is four feet above that one, so.
Oh, okay. The infiltrator is where, where I got the, the eight feet.
Yeah.
Right, but I think the confusion comes in where they want to know the groundwater elevation. What they really want to know is what the high water is there when it's in the spring versus the foundation floor of that house. The groundwater doesn't matter, cause it's a slab.
We have to show, they have estimated seasonal high groundwater, so when the soil value there goes out.
He's not getting it either.
And he noted where either they saw see, you know, steaming water in the test pit. So they may say, okay, that's at 100 inches. But if he sees what's called redox or lava machines, that water in the spring is sitting up here and it leaves deposits on the soil, then that's what he estimates for the seasonal high ground. That's what they find out to the level, what the hell, by DEPs. So even if it's a dry year and you don't even see groundwater, maybe you see the sea, the 12 feet. Your groundwater can be, you know, several feet above that base on that long redox and dirt.
Anyone else in the audience have any questions? Anyone else on the board have any questions? May I have a motion to continue to our next meeting for October 11th?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Dwarakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John, ringing as an aye. Thank you for your presentation. Pardon me? October 11th, that's the scheduled date. Uh, next on our list at 705, which isn't 705 anymore, um, applicant Shane Wood and Robin Payne requesting a site plan approval under section 3.2.3.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for daycare at 17 Curtis Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 12, parcel one. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All is in favor, Dwarakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John, ringing as an aye. It is a vote. The hearing is now open.
Good evening, Shane Wood and Robin Payne from 17 Curtis Street. We are, we failed to complete an application for an in-house preschool. Uh, this preschool is been inspected by the Massachusetts Department of Early Educational Care. The property, it has been accepted and approved as a suitable and safe environment for the children. Uh, they have granted a license that is acceptable up to eight children, uh, under the license. Uh, currently, the enrollment would look to be, uh, an average of just over five children per day. Uh, we're running right now a Monday through Thursday, uh, enrollment, uh, and, uh, to, to look at there. Um, the, upon the application that we submitted, we did receive a couple of comments. One is, uh, on the parking, to ensure that we have suitable parking away from any driveways or every, you know, other properties, of course. Uh, we submitted, which I'm sure is in there, the parking plan. Uh, so we have labeled out the specific parking areas. The hours right now are eight to four and they will continue to be that. The, uh, drop off is staggered between eight and 8:30 and the pickup is staggered between 3:30 and four. Um, so the parking is suitable, as you see there, to avoid, uh, any interference with the, uh, other driveways or other, obviously no, no property grounds that we're, we're on there. The other comment that we got was to, uh, by, I believe, the, uh, police chief to, as a recommendation, to install security cameras, having a preschool, uh, thought was a good idea. So that has been completed. We do have multiple security cameras on the property now that run 24 hours. You know, the technology now to our phones to see what's there, but mostly just to capture if anything is needed there. So both of those have, have been completed.
Anyone in the audience have any questions?
Yes.
Please go to the mic and state your name and your address, please.
I'm Gary Gustafson. I live at 28 Curtis Street, directly across from the applicants. Uh, my concern is parking. I've experienced over the last year, year and a half, parking issues. Uh, the applicants have, I believe, five cars and they parked the car, or have been parking the cars directly behind my driveway. At times I've had to actually drive over my lawn. Now, in the wintertime, when the town plows the snow, where are they going to park these five cars? Because they're keeping their driveway open for the customers that are dropping off their kids. And furthermore, it concerns me, I've been a resident for 20 years, how these people can come in and put a preschool directly across the street in a residential area. can come in and put a preschool directly across the street in a residential area. You know, they're going to get a check maybe for a hundred thousand a year, that's nice. Me, I have the parking issues. My property is devalued because I now have a preschool across the street. I just don't get it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any questions or comments? Please go to the mic.
Kevin Moss, one Betty Street. Is preschool the same as the uh daycare or?
Yes.
My question is now, I'm around the corner on Betty Street from Curtis Street and I've already been impacted by the new Montessori school around the corner. I mean, they take a mine street from a dead end street now to a major thoroughfare going into the school and coming out, Packet Dog. And that traffic there, like Gary says, in the wintertime, is only one lane going down that road. You have to swing by a telephone pole if you're coming out, you know, there's a car parked down the street, the new neighbor's there, you gotta swing towards the fire hydrant to get out and around. These daycares and stuff, uh, they can be, I, I assume they can be put up anywhere now. Or preschool, I mean, these are, I'm, I'm living on Betty Street because I'm in a residential, I want to be in a residential area without businesses. And all of a sudden, preschools are now, which I consider businesses, are impacting my residents up there. Somewhere, this stuff's gotta be stopped or some kind of regulations in planning here.
That would.
I don't know if there's time to ask this stuff, but the last one, I need to speak up during COVID because I thought they might be really, you know, some kind of problem in getting daycares there, but then once they made it into a profit center, I have a problem with them.
May I make a clarification just to, to make it clear? So I do operate as a preschool, but in the reason I call it a preschool, it's, I'm still licensed as a family childcare, in, in home childcare. Um, I operate as what I call a preschool and basically, and that's the age of children that I care for. So it doesn't change how many kids I, I can care for, it's the age group that I care for. So even if I were, I just, I just wanted to make a clarification, the difference between family childcare and preschool, so people understand what that means. Um, the amount of children that are in my care on a daily basis doesn't change if I operate as what's called a preschool or a family childcare. Um, I just take kids that are of preschool age, so I don't have infants or babies or toddlers or anything like that. So that's just, just to clarify the difference there. I just, I don't know who understands that difference or not.
Who's the age?
My age span of the children that I care for ages three to five.
Now, as far as where they can go, that's up to the zoning board, that's not up to us.
I thought I might hear that.
Huh? By the state?
It's actually the state.
I stand corrected, it's by the state.
It's actually the Commonwealth.
It's out of our hands, it's the Commonwealth of Mass.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it's actually licensed.
The Department of Early Education and Care are the ones that license me. It's through the state.
Now, I, didn't the building inspector get involved in this? Because he did unpack the job.
Yeah, we, we got a complaint about parking, which triggered the whole, this whole process. Um, to clarify, add to Todd's comment, um, we can't limit where daycares go, we can do site plan approval, but we can't um point to the state, turn each other, we can't limit daycares to a certain area of town. So we're allowed to do site plan approval and that's what to address these types of concerns, try to limit them.
How many preschools do we have around here guys?
Dad, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, you'd have to talk to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that's, that's out of our hands, unfortunately.
Well, I mean, businesses are a.
I don't know what they classify it as, it would be a business, but I don't know if it meets the criteria for a business zone.
Yeah, well, that's what they're for, business commercial.
So, not, not to be flippant, not to be flippant or anything, how many people work from home here? How many people work out of their homes?
Four.
Okay, is that a business?
Yeah.
Then how can they, then how could they be working in their home if it's a business? This is, this is the conundrum that we have.
Yeah, I understand that, that's why I'm here.
Right.
But I'm saying, somewhere this stuff's gotta stop. I mean, I, I, I moved into a territory of residence that was all houses, single families, dead end streets, that's where I wanted that front of the privacy. Now what's happening is people are moving in those territories and saying, what a great neighborhood, what a great neighborhood for preschool, what a great neighborhood to put somebody else's kids all around my, my yard. Um, impacted by traffic, I didn't get it on the house, I mean, you know, it's, I, it's, I'm not sure if I'm bitching or just saying, hey, where we go brings people's attention. I started with saying, what are you doing, I just had to get an invite, right, folks to come.
State government's daycare. You can't, you can't limit the daycares and.
You probably have to talk to your state rep or state senator on that one, because it is um done by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, not the town of Auburn. We, the town of Auburn doesn't have any say where a daycare can go. The only thing we can do is make sure that the site plan is okay. That's it.
Oh, where, where is the parking in the site plan?
It's in the driveway, but what they're gonna do is they're staggering, they're not gonna be cars parked there all day. They gotta come in, drop the kids off and leave. And then in the afternoon. What's that?
It happens in the wintertime when it's snowing.
Go to the microphone, please, so we can have the meeting minutes taken.
Suzanne Gustafson, twenty-eight Curtis Street, we live across the street from them.
You go over to the mic, please.
Oh, Suzanne Gustafson, twenty-eight Curtis Street, we live across the street from them. They have cars constantly parked in the street that do not move, okay? They used to be like four. Two of them would totally block our driveway. And my husband asked one of their customers one day, please tell them not to park and block our driveway.
Time out. Customer for what?
They come and they, they um.
They can't have customers yet, they're not an approved daycare. They're not a business yet, it hasn't been a, they can't have kids there yet.
Clearly, they're not operating.
They're not operating.
Really?
Jesus.
Excuse me, sir, may I speak? I am open, I opened in November of twenty twenty. I do have a business certificate signed off from the town. I do have a license from the state of Massachusetts. When I got my business certificate from the town, hit the computer, um, it was during COVID, the town hall was closed. I did file for a business certificate, I do have a copy of it, it's notarized from November eleventh of twenty twenty.
Just file.
I did ask what else needed to be done when I did this. Nobody ever guided me towards this.
I'm sorry to hear that, because every other daycare that's come in front of the planning board, they all had to go in front of the planning board. There's one on Packet Dog Street, four ten Packet Dog Street.
Yes, I'm.
There's one on James, um, Jerome, Jerome Ave.
Right.
That had to come before the planning board or parking, site circulation and all that.
The only thing I can say to you, sir, is I believe it was during COVID, everything was closed, the town hall was closed. I picked up my paperwork at the kiosk that was outside the town hall and my business certificate was mailed to me. I wasn't allowed to come in here for anything. I did ask when I filled out all this paperwork with my business certificate, what else needed to be done.
Well, you did have to come into the town hall, the kiosk was open every day.
I understand, but when I asked what else do I need to do to register my business and what else do I need to do, and nobody told me.
I don't know who you spoke to, but no one spoke to the planning board.
I know, I, I, like, I, I understand you didn't have the information, but I didn't know either.
This is kind of after the fact, so if the board so chooses to give this the okay, you guys gotta be better neighbors. Can't leave your cars parked across my driveway, I deal with it every day in my own dead end street, drives me insane. If you've got five cars, find a spot on the side of your driveway, on your lawn or whatever, pave it, park your cars there, use the driveway for your parking in and out. That'll solve the problem on the street. And if your car's on the road in the wintertime and it snows, it gets towed.
Sure.
And they are not on the road in the wintertime and.
So, yeah, you see in the parking plan, we have those areas on the grass as well that are cleared out for the winter. Um, you have, it's suitable parking without anything probably within thirty yards of a, of a driveway.
You have a, you have a big driveway there, it probably handles ten cars.
Yeah, it, it, no doubt, yep.
But I would suggest that if you're gonna.
Yeah, I, I think it's a lot of, not to cut you off, a lot of it is the communication, right? So we have now presented this to all of the families, uh, as well as incorporated this into the handbook. So it, it's a year over year mandate that this is the parking area for this, this environment.
And how many children, five?
I, I'm licensed for up to eight a day. The max I've had is six a day. I've, I've capped my personal enrollment just for my purposes.
But you could go to eight.
I could if I chose to, yes.
So that's eight cars, sixteen cars total a day. I don't know how you're gonna get eight cars in and out in a half an hour.
Um, there, it's particularly quick, I can show you my sign in and sign out of when the drop off and pickups are. It's staggered throughout a half hour in the morning and a half hour in the afternoon.
Um.
There's never eight families picking up or even six families at the same time.
Um, I, I have a question if.
Sure.
Well, Russ, and so one question, uh, how, Robin, uh, how many employees do you have?
Just myself, sir.
And so, um, so you have five cars on the property at all times, is that?
No, we have five children, so, and four of them are teenagers that, and three of them do drive, plus our vehicles.
Is there any plans to expand your driveway or extend it further?
We've talked about it, um, it is extremely costly, but it's not out of the realm of possibilities, it's definitely something we've looked at.
Go ahead, Ron. You gotta approve by the state. I don't, I don't know what to do.
State usually first, this one only just slipped through, that's why we didn't get it at a time. We can't deny. You can only do the conditions, the site plan is allowed in the district. You can add the conditions that you normally add.
That'll be a condition. That'll be a condition.
Can we add um like enforcement of parking? Is that, that's not under jurisdiction?
So on, on average, how many families are there during pickup and during drop off at one time?
I would say maybe three at a time.
And, and are they all single fa, single children or are they multiple children per family?
Single children.
They're all single.
I don't have multiple siblings, if that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was wondering. I'm just trying to figure out how many cars.
Yeah, for sure.
Anyone else in the audience? Sure, you have to go to the microphone, identify yourself again, please.
Kevin Moss, one Betty Street again. If you do grant permit for this, okay, she moves out, he moves out, next day the center comes in, what's to stop them from not, for uh doing the same thing, but only having sixteen kids instead of twenty, or maybe instead of six?
If they sell the house, Todd, you probably can correct me if I'm wrong, if someone else comes in and wants to do a daycare, they gotta go through the whole permit process with the state. They just can't come in and start a daycare.
Many children in a home. It's not, it's against the law.
Yeah.
The most that you could ever have is ten. I don't have the square footage, it's nothing I'm interested in. There would never be a daycare center at, like, when you're referring to the Montessori school around the corner from you, there's not enough square footage, I'm an in-home program, it will ne, it's not an option, there's no license for that.
So if your concern is that Montessori would move in there, let's say they move out of Montessori, that would have to go through the zoning board of appeals, that's an actual business, that's not an in-home childcare. In-home childcare gets the license through the state, they're limited to ten children maximum, um, but that's a rather large area, it's not even the entire square footage of the house, it would have to be the square footage of the dedicated area within the house, um, that they wouldn't have.
And the amount of children you're talking about, sir, changes the license from a family childcare to a group care and it, there's, there's no chance that that would ever happen in, in a residential home. It's a very different type of license.
Additionally, the license is issued to her, it's not issued to the residential location. So the new family coming in, they would have to go through the entire licensing again, go through the entire process again, come for site plan review again.
Question for probably not for here, but with the Montessori school, the Navy permitted in the initial process to run the Montessori school.
I don't know when that.
I heard that was just got passed through because there was a summon there beforehand.
I have no idea about the Montessori school, it never came before the planning board in the last five years that I've been here.
Yeah, one, one suggestion I have, one question.
Yes.
To Robin, is, um, I know we, you have an eight to eight thirty and three to, three thirty to four.
Yes.
Pickup and, and drop off hours. Can that be extended?
It sure could.
Now, the only, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to think, if you give, I, I don't know how many minutes you give for each, each parent to drop off, but if that can be extended as a, as a duration, then you don't have too many people waiting there?
Yeah, I, I definitely could absolutely do that, I don't give like specific minutes for drop off, I've made it very clear that it is drop and go and pick and go. Um, but I can, I can reevaluate that if that's something that you think would make better sense. I do know that most parents are dropping off so that they can get off to work as well. So it really does revolve around maybe their work schedules, so that might be tricky to limit somebody, you know, you get traffic, somebody's now five minutes behind or, or whatever, I, just thinking thoughts out loud.
Right, but on the flip side, that might just be a choke point for, for a lot of residents on the street, right, between eight to eight thirty, you might just be seeing a lot of cars there. Yeah, and I think, you know, some conditions where that'll help improve the parking, I think as, as residents, I think it is our responsibility to be good neighbors, so, you know, we just need to make sure that our neighbors are fully comfortable with our, our parking arrangements.
Understood.
It's not cut and dry. You wanna have a rule that's cut and dry, you have to have parking space if they don't. Nothing to argue with, nothing to discuss by neighbors. Yes or no? If they have parking spaces, good, if they don't, it doesn't go there. You shouldn't make it cut and dry, why would I enter, it's not good behavior policy. It's whether you can do it or I can't do it, that's what we come to you guys.
The state granted them the license. We didn't grant them the license for any home care, uh, childcare or preschool, whatever you wanna call it. We didn't grant them that. Like I said, if you've got a problem with that, you gotta go to your state rep or state senator. We have no authority over that, nothing. So in my own mind, as a solution, it's gonna wind up cutting your own throat. I can have them get uh no parking signs on both sides of the road, that the town will approve, they'll pay to put them in, but then you can't park on the street either.
No.
You live around the corner, but this gentleman, Mike. We could do that, we gotta make that as a condition. Make that as a condition, could we?
I think before we start.
We were need to get D P Ws in police departments, I put on that because police would be after March or in D P W, that's installing, so that's.
I mean, I, I would also wanna, you know, better gauge the, their viewpoint of the other neighbors who are not here tonight on whether they want parking restricted on their street as well. Cause that, that's gonna impact their access as well.
That's what I was saying, I mean, you can make, put no parking signs up, but then it restricts everyone, not just the school.
I mean, a, as it is, their driveway is large enough, most likely if they pack the cars tight, to fit their five cars and the six cars coming in the family.
And it's not just a driveway search, it's still the lawn to the side.
I, I. They, they. They, they park their cars on the street out of convenience, they, and, and the neighbors, you know, and, and their, you know, not the neighbors, their, their customers are parking, you know, rather large out of convenience. But I can tell you right now, looking at this driveway, you could fit easily those six cars and the five cars that they have, if they, if they stagger them and park them.
It's insane, their driveway is approximately thirty feet wide and maybe three to thirty-five feet long, and how you gonna fit eleven vehicles in there? Think about it.
That would be a square, right? I mean, obviously it's, it's a longer, much longer driveway than thirty feet by thirty feet, right? You can see it as a rectangle.
You, you can see it, exactly. So, I mean, and, and you're staggering, not all six cars are there.
Correct.
At once. So I think one of the, one of the conditions that I would ask that we put on this is that any of their customers are not allowed to do pickup, drop off activity on the public way. Everything has to be.
In the driveway.
In the driveway.
Okay, yeah.
Which means you can't park your five cars on the street for the convenience of your customer.
Okay.
So to be a good neighbor, I would say you got a lot of space on the left, I see So to be a good neighbor, I would say you got a lot of space on the left. I see a car on the left right now on the lawn. You could park your five cars over there while, you know, what are you hoping, Monday through Friday or Monday through Thursday?
Monday through Thursday at the moment, but potentially Monday through Friday.
Okay, Monday through Friday. So Saturday and Sunday, doesn't matter. You can park your own cars in your own yard. But come Monday through Friday, you can't have five cars in the driveway and expect, cause I know what's gonna happen. Customers are gonna come up, they're gonna park on the road, they're gonna block his driveway, take the kid in, come out, talk to you for 10, 15 minutes. He's gotta get out for a doctor's appointment, or she does, they can't get out of the driveway, and then we're right back here again. So it, the onus is on you two to be really good neighbors.
Understood.
Yes.
It's... I think you can see that from what Adam says to us, it's approved by the state and it comes before us, but we're not allowed to deny it. Okay? Cause I think you could see that there'd be some serious concerns from all of us, okay? I probably might not vote for it. I think it's a good thing that you do, but I probably wouldn't because I am extremely on the side of the neighbors that they bought those houses the same as you could be those people in a nice, real nice neighborhood and didn't expect to have something like that there. And then Betty Street already being opened up to go down and facilitate the Montessori school. So I just think you have to be extremely cognizant and respectful of the wishes of the neighbors.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any questions in the audience? If you have to go to the mic, identify yourself again, your address.
So it's, it's residential A. I take it now, that zone where they are.
Yeah. Please, so...
Live Stop. Yes, that's the Live Stop.
Okay, so, but, so that, it's a business, right? But it doesn't qualify as a regular business because it's daycare?
Not considered a business under state law. Under state law, it's an in-home educational facility.
They make money, but it's not a business?
Under state law, it's not considered a business.
And you can drive off. This is not, you know, doing work at home. People are actually driving up and it's fought for. I mean, this is a business. Now, what do I get out? They get a hundred thousand dollars. I get a hit on my property value and I get the traffic and the cars packed up in my driveway. This is plain wall. This is, in the winter, it's, I'm disgusted.
Please identify yourself and give your address.
Carson Bean. I live at 42 Curtis Street. My teenagers have more car, cars than this business has. They're in and out. They're so quick. As far as being a good neighbor, they, they're good neighbors. Not so much. That's all I'm gonna say.
Understood. We cannot deny them the daycare, cause it's, that's regulated by the state. And I'll say it again, if you got a problem with it, you gotta go to the state regulators and you gotta go to the state rep and the state senator. It's out of our hands. We, we don't control that. We don't. And it's an in-home daycare which isn't considered a business by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That's out of our hands.
You know, I own three houses. I did four of them all. Rent this house, though, it costs a little bit. This is just my, this is going in the wrong direction. Now, what we're doing here is, but it's wrong.
I don't know about the country. We're talking about a daycare right here, right now, so we're not gonna get off the beaten path here.
I know, I know.
Yes.
May I have a... I'm gonna close the public hearing.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan's an aye. The hearing is now closed. Now, as far as giving the approval with some conditions, we can do that. So you had some good suggestions, Todd, as far as...
I mean, I, I would make the condition that, uh, any motor vehicles coming to the location that's related to the pickup and drop-off must be on-site and not on the public way.
Ron, do you have anything else to add?
I'd just say that we looked at Adam to talk with Joanna, the highway superintendent, an engineer, to see if they can install signs or what, you know, if you wanna, I don't know how you check with the whole neighborhood.
The only thing you can really do up there to be fair to everyone is resident parking only. That's the only thing you can do to be fair.
Something.
Something. That has to go to the DPW. Um, my other condition would be that, yes, you have to unload on-site in your driveway, but you can't have any of your private cars on the public way during the week while you're having the daycare. And you have to enforce that and you have to enforce, and I, and to be honest with you, I get frustrated with some of the things we approve here. And people say they're gonna enforce things and nothing ever happens. I've seen it over and over again. There's nothing I can do about it, but it drives me crazy. So I would say you have to be a good neighbor. You have to unload and load in your driveway and no private vehicles parked on the road, summer, winter, spring or fall. Is that fair?
Related to the business.
Related to the business.
You have family coming over on a Saturday.
That's a different story.
I just wanna make sure that...
So if we happen to have somebody come over to watch a football game on a Sunday and our neighbor's taking pictures of their vehicle cause they're parked on the street?
No.
That's something to be concerned about?
He just, he just made that condition that only during, only during your daycare hours. I mean, like he just said, if you have a family gathering on a Saturday or a Sunday. I mean, it's public parking on the street. I can't tell you you can't park on the street. But I can put a condition out that you can't park your cars on the street during your, your working hours, which I think is fair.
Yeah, absolutely, sir.
You know, keep them happier and them happier. And I don't know what to say about the Montessori school. It's out of my hands. May I have a motion to approve with the conditions set forth?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ron?
Close.
Uh, myself, John Regan's an aye. It is a vote. Do you have to, you'll get a decision or a letter from you?
I think he asked us, but I'll vote aye. Aye as well.
I did.
With the condition, yeah. You just went with Ronnie.
I don't know. He said aye, you said aye, and then I said, Ron, what about you?
Just, well, make sure we get Rachel's proper minutes.
Correct. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the amendments to the table of uses, section 3.2.2.3 apartments of the Auburn zoning bylaw. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Duarkesh. Ron?
Aye.
Please step back behind the lower part, please. You're in our space. All the way back, all the way back before you open your mouth, please.
All I wanted to say is that your sound system is off. It needs an upgrade.
Muffled. I'm hearing an echo of my voice.
I think that it was, I have the understanding to say.
Okay.
And I know because I ran the sound systems of some of the school buildings. The Ed Roman usage is what it is. So I know what good sound system is. All right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, seven, ten amendments to the table of uses, section 3.2.2.3 apartments of the Auburn zoning bylaw. We have, I'm gonna go to this again. May I have a motion to open the hearing, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, aye, John Regan's an aye. It's all yours, Adam.
So the board, I recall that you saw this in the spring. Um, basically, the state is telling us we need to allow apartments by right or with site plate approval in certain parts of the town in order to remain eligible for grant programs. The big one is Mass Works. That's, that's, the big one they're out to others also. Um, so we're looking tonight for the board to either recommend approval to a town meeting or not recommend approval. Um, and I did put together a motion summary. Get it. This, this does fall under the majority approval um, for zoning at town meeting because it refers to density instead of the usual super majority. So that's why I gotta put that together, sort of make sure we caption it.
May I have a motion to approve certain amendments?
Close the hearing.
What's that? Close the hearing? May I have a motion to close the hearing, please?
You wanna make the motion? I'll make the motion to close the hearing.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Duarkesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Close.
For closing the hearing?
Um, I'm sorry. I thought we were voting or whatever.
No, Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan's an aye. It is a vote. Now, Todd?
Yep. Uh, I move to recommend approval of the proposed zoning amendment to sections 3.2.2.3 apartments with a majority vote per chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020 by town meeting.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Duarkesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Close.
Aye.
Myself, John Regan's an aye. It is a vote. Next on the agenda is applicant Richard Hakala requesting site plan approval under section 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a church at 188 Oxford Street North, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 17, parcel 211. Is there anyone here representing Richard Hakala? Okay, could you please make a presentation, please? State your name, your address.
Uh, Rafael Orojo, 188 Oxford Street. Uh, we just got the plans today. Richard's no longer with us. Uh, we had to terminate his employment, so we are hiring another architect and we're gonna represent our case before the board. We do have some plans right here. They're hard copies, the original we got in today. Um, it is an existing site, so we're not doing anything externally. Uh, we're just gonna remodel inside and it's gonna continue to be a church. So the plans would be to have classrooms inside for the children.
Unfortunately, we cannot vote on this tonight because we haven't had a chance to look at the plans. They have to be in...
Right, that's why I say Richard's no longer with us. We hire a new architect and we're getting the paperwork ready and we're gonna refile the motions, but I got a call from Adam last week or so, um, saying that we were scheduled to be here.
So would you like to continue this to our next hearing? That way you'll have time to get the plans in. We'll have time to review.
Yes, I would.
May I have a motion to continue this to our next hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Duarkesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Hi, John Regan is an aye. It is a vote. We will see you at the next meeting. Thanks for coming. We appreciate it. Sorry you had to wait so long.
October 11th.
October 11th.
Okay, nope.
Okay, next on the agenda, applicant Brendan Greeley requesting site plan approval under section 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a garage and site improvements. Having instructed at an existing commercial business at 4 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 28, parcel 3, continued from 91322. Is there anyone here representing Brendan Greeley? There being none.
They're requesting a continuance.
They have requested a continuance. May I have a motion to continue this to our next, uh, meeting on October 11th?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Hi, John Regan is an aye. It is a vote. Next on the agenda is applicant Todd Osterkolowitz, Quality Contracting Incorporated requesting site plan approval under 9.4 and 3.2.5.7 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for two general service commercial buildings with site improvements. A waiver for a landscape is requested at 282 Selbert Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 25, parcel 25. This has been continued from our September 13th meeting. Is there any news from them?
He's on the computer.
He is, okay. I can't see plans on the computer, but...
Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Again, uh, this is Zachary Gilles from Existing Grade, uh, representing the project. Uh, it sounded like we're gonna be requesting a continuance. We have not received any response on the submitted or the revised plan from Gray and hearing, but we did go through and make their requested changes. We're in agreement with everything that they asked for and, um, I think until kind of we get their, their response back, we'll kind of be sitting at that point with it.
So, so the chair, could we, um, I emailed Zachary Gilles a couple of times. I don't know if he got the email or not. Um, I'd ask that he submit hard copies, so if the board can review them and the town administration can review them.
Yes. Are you on?
Yeah, that, that, I think was a misunderstanding on my end. I've been printing all night to bring these over to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
So did you wish to continue to our next meeting?
Yes, sir.
May I have a...
I'll make the motion to continue to the next meeting.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Duarkesh?
Aye.
Ron? Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan is an aye. It has now been, um, continued to our next meeting. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Um, next on the agenda is, uh, modification decisions, 385 Selbert Street, Commiss Drive, 313 Washington Street. Which I can't sign.
You don't have to sign when they come. You weren't here.
Exactly. Uh, while that's being signed, meeting minutes of 913202. May I have a motion to approve meeting minutes as submitted?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Duarkesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan is an aye. It is a vote. New business unforeseen by the chair? I don't have any new unforeseen business. Uh, member town planner update?
I don't have anything new.
Um, our next meeting is scheduled for October 11th, 2022. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Duarkesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Hi, myself, John Regan is an aye. The meeting is now adjourned.